We'll stand for the pledge of allegiance and Mr. Posey will lead us, lead us in vacation. Flags in the corner.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Almost grace heaven, Father Lord, just thank you for the leaders of this county to be able to meet together, Lord. Lord, just please be with our country and be with all the sickness and all the disturbances, Lord, and just please help us through that. Lord is always, just help us make wise decisions and lead us to God's accord of your will. Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. This time, June 25th, Lincoln County School Board meeting will begin. Our agenda will begin with item number one, consider approval of June 1st to 2020 board minutes. Do I have a motion to accept? Ms. Veronica moved, Mr. Tucker second. All in favor, please say aye. Pose likewise. Carries. Second item, item number two is consider approval of agenda per policy 1.403. Dr. Heath, anything to add there?
Yeah, I've got three things actually. Apologize for that, but the first one would be, I guess for item 4A would be modifications to Lincoln Central Academy for the TCAT Center. For your consideration. Item 4B would be surplus of a combi oven at Flintville for your consideration. And item C would be a resolution for a purchasing cooperative agreement for consideration. And under points of information, I do, I do have a seventh thing. I know you have six things listed there. Number seven would be a special session that I'd be asking you for possibly July 9th, but talk about that when we get down to it.
Does any other board member? If you don't care, I'm gonna add item D, Mr. Tucker on his committee report. And item E is just a little discussion on just any board member on the, on the things that are going on with the restart, the questions or anything of that to ask. While we're here tonight, does anybody else have anything else to add? And the other thing under points of information on eight would be on how with the COVID and our recognitions, kind of discuss that at the end. Do I have a motion to approve? Ms. Haines' motion, Mr. Tucker second. All in favor, please say aye. Pose likewise, motion carries. And item number three tonight, is there any other recognitions, Dr. Heath, besides? At this time, I'd like to recognize two of our student school board members, as we say. They've been serving us in advisory capacity. First one I'd like to recognize tonight is Mr. Sahil Patel. And... Well, I guess I'll read this to you first, but I'm just calling to you. This certificate of recognition is presented to Sahil Patel, 2019, 2020, and being valedictorian in his class of 2020, and we appreciate it. Thank you. The next one I have is Mr. Andrew Dixon. And Andrew's a sophomore, and again, this certificate of recognition reads that is presented to Andrew Dixon for 2019, 2020 student board representative. And we appreciate everything, and again, the time and effort it takes to come to the board meeting, and hope it's been beneficial overall, and we appreciate it. Thank y'all. Dr. Heath, item 4A is modification of Lincoln Central Academy of the TCAT.
Yes, we had a meeting recently at the county mayor's office regarding some grants that have, have been applied for and received. And Mr. Bryant and I were there representing the school system. There were a couple of things in discussion that might be permanent changes to the building, and of course, that would need to be something that as a board you would approve. I didn't hear many things that were huge changes, but anything that would be considered a permanent type change would be something you'd need to approve. So I asked Mr. Bryant to come and speak to what, whatever that is tonight.
Thank you. We, we did meet with several people in the mayor's office, and I think there was about six or seven of us there. There were some questions that came up, you know, over bid limits and things of that nature, fire marshal approvals, all those things, work being done by TCAT personnel. But the two things that require, I think they require board approval is they're gonna change some electrical stuff around. They're wanting to add an industrial maintenance class back there, and the way they, they've shortened their scope of work somewhat. Instead of a bigger scope like they did have, they're, they're going more with an industrial maintenance, not gonna have to do that much electrical, not gonna have to pull a new electrical service in, and those types of things. So number one is they gotta do some electrical work. Number two is they, we've got some lockers in there that actually set up on some curbs, and they're concrete curbs. Now, you know, who knows what they're gonna get into and then knock those down, whether they sit on top of the original concrete, or whether they've been cut into the concrete, but they gotta knock those down because they're trip hazards. So those are the main two things they're gonna have to do to the building in order to get that classroom or shop or lab setting. And I think we probably put everything else to rest. We had some issues, you know, about maybe bid limits and things of that nature. Because the county did get the grant, not the school system, not TCAT, the county actually got the grant to do a lot of this, buy the material mainly for $30,000, I think. And the only two things out of there, I think, were, was that it had to meet, either be on a purchasing agreement, or, you know, had to go through the finance office correctly. And the only thing I had after we got through talking was they had to get fire marshal approval. Because I don't know that, you know, I want to be sure we've got the existing firewalls and stuff in place before we make those modifications. So other than that, there's two items that will modify the building significantly, so I think those are two items that you all would need to vote on.
When you say modify, are you talking about cosmetically or just?
Well, the lockers, that's a cosmetic thing, you know, now what they're going to do to get the floor back, you know, level, they'll just have to do when they get in there. Now, the electrical though is something that's, you know, a pretty major change. And of course, it'll have to be inspected by the electrical inspector and all those things. It'll have to pass inspections. We're doing the building right now, and you know, it's internally, and it's going to have to pass inspection, but you know, I think the main thing is that they, that make sure for you all, or my main thing is make sure it all passes and that the fire marshal approves of all the changes. Other than that, I have no, no problem with the changes. I don't think it cost us any money, so we're good.
Move to approve. Allow them to make the changes as needed for the industrial maintenance class?
Mr. Posey makes a motion to have a second. Mr. Bradley second. Any other discussion? Roll call me, please. I know it's no money, but.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Dunn?
Aye.
Mrs. Haines?
Aye.
Mrs. Haines?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Stevenson?
Aye.
Eight and O and one absent. I mean, seven and O and one.
Seven, O, one absent. The motion carries. We appreciate it. Mr. Bryant?
Yes, sir.
Next item, Dr. Heath, surplus of.
Yeah, later on, I think in Mr. Cole Bradford's presentation somewhere, you'll see a purchase of a combi oven, maybe at Flintville. But we need to surplus the one that's there. It is irreparable, and we need to surplus it so we can actually get rid of the oven. So that's what item B is.
Recommendation, Dr. Heath, to have a motion?
I'd recommend approval. Yeah.
I'll move.
Mr. Tucker moves.
Second to motion.
Mr. Dunn, second. Roll call me, please, man.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Dunn?
Aye.
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Haines?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Stevenson?
Aye.
Mr. Tucker?
Aye.
Seven and O and one.
Seven, O, one absent. Motion carries. We appreciate it. Next item is a resolution on the purchasing agreement.
Yes, you know, we, the CARES Act money has been, not distributed, but it's been allocated. And we were put on a short, short timeline to, to make our plans, to get those submitted. So now we're making sure that, that our purchases fall properly in with the auditing and federal requirements in regard to how we purchase these items. So that a year and a half from now, we don't get an audit finding and a payback because maybe we skipped a step in our rush. So as we look through that today, or this week, Dr. Fanning.
The instructional team is coming before you tonight, asking that we become a part of the PEPM Cooperative Purchasing Agreement. In the past, we are part of a TPN, TIPS in U.S. Communities, and it's where it allows school districts and boards, municipalities to purchase items that's already been bid out and approved. So for example, if it's over the bid limit, if we purchase something off of a purchasing or cooperative plan, we can purchase items. We are concerned as an instructional team that with students being out the last couple of months of school, we need some type of software that can hopefully catch the students up. We're looking at iXL. iXL has been around for several, well, several years. It's one of the best programs that's around. We can also use it not only to catch up or remediate students, but if we were to have to go to some type of virtual or hybrid setting, that software could then, assignments could be placed in iXL and then placed in Google Classroom. So we have a resolution asking the board tonight to approve our partnership or joining this cooperative agreement. If it passes tonight, it'll then go on to the county commission for their approval. We have worked the last two days with Jackie and Finance and Cole throughout the day, and we're just trying to make certain that it's a product we desperately believe that we need. It's a great product, and in order to purchase it for the amount it is, we need it to be on a cooperative purchasing plan.
So this recommendation is just to approve it, then if you come back to purchase it, then we'll be voting on the purchase, or is this?
They, we've already put it in a CARE grant that we want to purchase it. That's been approved in a plan that Ms. Prior has sent. But we cannot purchase it with the amount of money it is unless we can purchase it off of a purchasing agreement.
And we, and we already purchase a lot of things off of those, of different purchasing agreements, vehicles, a lot of things, you know, Ricky gets a lot of things off of, what is it called?
We use TIPS, U.S. Communities, and we're U.S. Communities change something else, I think.
Yeah, and source wells, and Brad gets a lot of things, you know.
And for those of you that were on the board, probably you heard purchasing alliances a lot after the tornado that hit South Lincoln. Because at that time, Office Depot was the only, well, Office Depot had a contract with U.S. Communities. So that's where we spent several days repurchasing items, whether it was a stapler, or a eraser, or scissors, and all that stuff. But we had to purchase from Office Depot because if we had not, we would have gone over the bid limit and we couldn't purchase.
Do I have a motion? Move to approve. Mr. King makes motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Bradley, second. Any other discussion? Roll call me, please, man.
Mr. Dunn?
Aye.
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Haines?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Stevenson?
Aye.
Mr. Tucker?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Seven and O and one.
Seven, O, one absent. Motion carries. We appreciate it. At this time, Mr. Tucker and his committee met on the purchasing of part of the Blanche property. If he'd give us an update on that?
We, we met this week and talked about it, and pretty much the one thing that I got out of the committee meeting this week was a lot of good ideas what to do with the property. But the one thing that everybody agreed on was not to sell anything, no property, not to sell the house. Now, that'll come later when we do make our recommendations, just to give you a heads up. But we did work with people like David Qualls with their extension office and stuff, and they got some good ideas about some simulators that might could go in the house. Also using it like a, like a science center, put raised gardens and stuff in so kids could come, maybe even put some kind of nature walk on it, identifying trees that they can come and learn about trees that day. But this is definitely for the whole county and maybe outside our county, if our insurance allowed that. So they're talking about doing several different things there. The next meeting we're gonna have, we're gonna meet on the property so that we can actually see what's available, you know, what we can do, move, and make work. But they agreed to try to do something, I don't know that the next time I talk about it at our next meeting, but agreed to do like a five-year plan so that we do something each year to try to expand it, to make it so the kids can come. And also it was talked about using it as a day camp, like have the kids to come one day during the summer, you know, get a group of kids to come during the summer, so that's where we're at right now.
Definitely curriculum-based. That's, I think that's an awesome use of that property.
All of them talked about the, the teachers and using it for a curriculum base and to meet their standards too, so.
Well, we appreciate it and forward ahead, and we look forward to see what we come up with that and make that an intricate piece of that property and utilize all of it that we can.
Exactly.
Next item I put on there is just a general discussion of any of the board members. I know the administrative staff is working diligently on putting plans together, and I think it's the July night, this special call meeting is to kind of finalize that. Does anybody have any, just questions? Just tell them what we would be looking at or being discussed tonight?
I would be able to come July 9th.
Oh. Anybody? The only thing that I've been asked and been asked is, and this may not be connorched or not, but are we, are we shooting for the original start date? We just don't know how we're gonna start it.
Yes, we, we, we've sort of passed that bridge that we want to maintain the current school calendar. With maybe the exception if we feel like we have to add some either e-learning days or some, some professional staff development type days periodically through that first semester. That, we're gonna be discussing that a little bit, but, but as far as the start date, we're still, that's what we're shooting for, yes. And, and I mean, you went ahead and mentioned July 9th. I mean, I know I've got it down on points of information, but what we would like to do, we have sort of, well, in discussion, we have set a goal for us to present to you what we recommend as the best possible opening plan as of July 9th. Now, that gives us, you know, that next day we'll come to work, and any modifications that you want as a board, we'll make. And then that following Monday on the 13th, we're gonna have another faculty meeting. We had a faculty meeting last week, a virtual faculty meeting with all our faculties. Do that that Monday, and hopefully begin to get more details out, because that's what everybody wants to know is the details. And of course, we do too. It's just, you know, every time we develop a detail, two or three other questions come up. So it's, it's very frustrating in this planning phase right now, but, but that, we've sort of set that as a goal for the 9th through the 13th, to get those things done. So if we need to survey parents again after the 13th, we'll have at least a week or so to get some surveys done and find out some information for some parents, if we need that at that point in time.
Well, I know it's difficult because what you can plan for and decide today can change tomorrow with everything going on, but we're trying, the staff is, to get the best possible scenario that's beneficial to the student, the parent, as everybody as a whole. I know we talk, look at the whole child, and that's our goal, but you know, you have childcare and things, and how things are structured, and all those components as well. And we're just trying to make the best decision that we can do. And I know everybody's looking at other systems and social media, there's comparisons to everybody, but everybody's situation is going to be unique to their own system is how I look at it. You can't broad brush it and put it across everywhere, so.
So Tommy, it's like the state will make recommendations, right, Dr. Heath, for us to follow, but then we are allowed, each, each school or each county is gonna be allowed to do it as they see fit?
The state has put out what they call toolkits, toolkits for different areas of operation. Like there'd be a transportation toolkit, a safety and wellbeing toolkit, and an instructional toolkit. Each of those toolkits is full of recommendations and thoughts and ideas, no requirements. It's left up to the local totally. And, you know, sometimes I think they're, they're putting guardrails in place for, for some protection for themselves as well as for us. And so, you know, these toolkits, I think there's about, I don't know, what, 15 of them, and about, each one is anywhere from like 12 to 40 pages of things. And so it's overwhelming, the information, and trying to figure out, okay, what is best for Lincoln County and our students? Because there will not be a consensus on what is best. You know, we can go out and ask one parent today, and they'll say, well, my child doesn't need to be there no matter what until this thing, until this virus is gone. And then another parent will say, well, my child, I want my child there tomorrow. And there's no way in, I mean, it's.
I've had, I've had several people ask me about it, and so will there be anyone that's actually over if a child decides to not return to school and wants to do the virtual school? Will there be someone in each school that's over?
That's what we're gonna bring to you on July 9th.
Okay.
We want to try to iron out the details in our working groups here, and then present it to the board first. Now, I talked to a group of teachers today to get their opinion on a couple of things. Ms. Fisher was having a professional development session, and I just pranced in there and said, hey, I want to talk to you for a minute. So I interrupted her meeting, but I think it was a good conversation. And, and just to get some feedback from, and that was our K2. Now, as a board, I just want to know, I will, to the best of my ability on our weekly updates before then, the Monday update I give you, I'll try to sort of let you know what we're thinking on some of those, but nothing to be definitive until that week of July 9th.
Well, a lot of those numbers, something you described is, you know, is it's an effect on our budget as well. If they're not here or whatever, and you'd be stress testing budgets such as food service and see what that does.
We had a South Central Superintendent's meeting virtually the other day, and, and, you know, one of the superintendents was, he was a little frustrated, and he said, I'm almost to the point, I need to say, you know, we're gonna start as, as normal. If, if you can't do that, then, then, you know, homeschooling is probably your best option. But then he's like, and then, but if that happens, then we lose the BEP dollars, and if 20% of our kids do that, then there goes 20% of our funds, so what, 20% of our staff are we gonna lay off, you know? So, so yeah, we've got to meet the needs of every child in some way, and that's what we're working on. We're trying to find out the best way to do that.
We appreciate it. Anybody got anything else? Next item is Mr. Posey, the policy.
All right. Tonight, we have policy 3.206, community use of school facilities. Policy is being updated after discussion between Dr. Heath and Chuck Cagle. The change in this policy is highlighted in green. The updated policy is more restrictive by adding board approval. The request is that we approve this on first and final. Dr. Heath, would you?
Just a little advice that our attorney gave us. There was nothing wrong with our policy to start with, but he said that over the years, he has seen school systems that allowed the facility use agreements to be done at the school level to get in, sort of morph into a situation where it becomes almost an open forum. And then you've got maybe political groups or religious groups, you know, using our facilities on a regular basis. And then what happens the first time somebody, a principal or somebody says no, then it's very hard to say no because it becomes a discriminatory act because you said yes and made it almost an open forum. So he recommended very highly that, that we maintain our, our policy is a good policy, but add in there that every one of those has to come before the board. Now, this discussion with Mr. Cagle originated when we stumbled upon a couple of, of things that had been agreed to that actually were outside of, outside of our policy a little bit, but more so COVID-19 issues. You know, having a large group of people, allowing somebody to rent a facility and having a large group of people in there became sort of a liability concern. That's when I called our attorney. And so, you know, that, this is the only change though that we're requesting at this time.
Well, in speaking with that, we as the system, there's additional costs involved with cleaning during a COVID crisis. I mean, have we got a fee structure that, and is there an out for us to suspend? The facility usage?
Yes, as a board, we can, you know, we can do that. In fact, I think maybe the next item on here. No, actually, as part of this item, I want to bring up something, because there's a couple. What I, what I did after I had my conversation with Mr. Cagle was I notified the principals to cancel all, all agreements that had been previously signed. And realized one of these agreements was signed a year ago, you know, so well before COVID even got here. So we've done that, and there's two that I brought back that have been longstanding yearly things that have occurred on our campus that I want you to consider as long as there's proper social distancing or whatever the requirements are. Now, there's others that I'm not bringing back to the table. A couple of them were private organizations looking to make, you know, we're looking to use our facilities to make a profit, and that's against policy anyway, and it shouldn't have been signed, but we've corrected that issue. But, but, and I don't want to bring that one back to the table, but there are two that I want to bring back. You know, if you, if you change this policy first, then I'll bring those up. And I don't think that's anywhere else on here, so that is during this item. We'll, we'll talk about that.
It's a recommendation from policy. Is any other discussion?
It's, we didn't have, we actually need a motion in a second.
Yeah, because it wasn't.
And this includes the parking lot as well. I know this says facilities, but any parking lots as well? I know there's some things that goes on in the parking lot out here, car shows and whatnot.
Any, any, any group that's not a school group?
Any, any, any group that's not a school group that needs to use our, or wants to use our facility needs to abide by this policy, whether it's inside or out, yes.
Driver.
Motion.
Motion to accept.
Mr. Bradley makes motion. Ms. Haynes, second. All in favor, please say aye. Pose likewise. Motion carries. Next item, Dr. Heath.
Okay, there are two, this is still item six. There are two agreements that were signed.
We were on five.
We were on five. Oh, so item six, yeah, I'm jumping ahead there. Item six is the two items then, yes, sorry, thank you, Kevin. All right, so on item six, you've got two rental applications in your, in your packet. Now, let me say this, you know, they're different because one's at the high school and one's at Lincoln Central. By you approving that previous policy, we are working on a, a, an agreement that is the same throughout the system as far as what it looks like and what's included on there. So, we won't bring to you different rental agreements that look differently and have different items on there in the future. We're gonna streamline it and give them the same. But, the two are, one is the auditorium and three classrooms in the halls and the restrooms at Lincoln Central Academy. This is a dance recital by Backstage Performing Arts. I met with the, the organizer of, or the person from the dance recital from Backstage Performing Arts. They, she and they are willing to do whatever social distancing, whatever requirements we have to use our facility, whether that means instead of three rooms, they spread out their, their dressing rooms out to five or six classrooms. They have a limited number of people in the auditorium. I mean, I'm just letting you know, they're willing to do any, any and everything. They've done this from what I understand, close to 30 years in our facility. So, this one, because we do have several kids involved, it is one that's been going on. I felt like we ought to at least have a discussion and, you know, it could be, you could very easily say, you know, because of COVID-19 and be very justified in saying, "We're not gonna let any of these things happen in our building at just, you know, until a later date." But, I'm just letting you know, this, this is one person that I met with. The other one that I'm, I'm not sure, Mr. Owens, did we ever get a contact with the folks with the, the concert? I know we had, we had sat back and forth and, and I was out, you were out. So, the other one is the concert that our Booster Club wants to have for football, which has been rescheduled a couple of times and could probably be rescheduled again. What's the latest schedule on that? Is it late August right now?
August 15th.
Okay, it's right now it's scheduled August 15th. And that was in the gymnasium? It's outside?
It's outside.
Okay, it's outside, sorry.
It's inside.
It's in the gym, okay, I thought it was in the gym. So, so that's the other one that I would want you to consider. And if, and if you think we should, you know, reschedule that one, that's fine. But, I would ask you to at least, it is a group that directly benefits our kids there too.
Would that be an option to have it outside?
I have no, I don't know enough about details.
I think they talked about that and that was, we issue was sound. I think, I think that...
You want us to do them together?
That feels good idea.
I'd make a motion that we approve these as long as they abide by administration and district policies.
A second.
And, and work with our district to figure out what we do.
I'd also like to throw in, whatever the, whatever phase the state of Tennessee and Lincoln County is in is if you approve this, that's what I would like to do. And we'd probably get our health department involved in making sure that we had the correct information to give them at that point in time for that date, if, if you so want us to do that.
Got a motion, a second. Any other discussion?
Well, let's hold on just a second. Right now, there's, there's no gatherings more than 50 people. Am I correct about that?
I'm not sure if that's correct. We had a few thousand graduation the other night. So, you mean inside? Is that what, is that what the phase is, Tennessee?
Well, that's what's...
That's right.
Okay.
So, I, I would not think that either one of those, I mean, I don't know. Melvia, would you all be able to, is it not Melvia that?
Oh, she is here, I'm sorry.
Would, would that, would that even be possible under those circumstances to have only 50 people? If that's still the state guidelines?
I was, I was looking to see, um, this says for buildings, limit the capacity 50%.
50%, not 50 people, is that what you're saying?
Fifty percent of all of the facilities. So, I would have to read the, the Tennessee pledge to his guidelines to make sure what that said.
I know that's for, for restaurants and for, you know...
This is for large venues and large venues.
Large venues, okay.
And, and Ms. Haynes, if, if, if this is approved, like I said, I wanna get the health department involved in this because they're the ones that will know the more details about.
School will be in session by then also, right?
Not for the recital.
Not for the recital, but for the... Yeah.
July 25th, okay.
And this is one, this, she signed this agreement May 3rd of 2019. I don't know if you all caught that. So, it's been on the books for a while and, and...
I was just wondering if we, we might want to be able to make some modifications ourselves if possible, you know, that's what...
Well, I think anything we approve tonight is subject to change. I mean, other, out of our control. I mean, I get the social distancing and that aspect, and it is not part of a school function that we're sponsoring. But, if we say there's social distancing and it, social media shows it wasn't, it makes it, I'm just...
Yes.
I'm not against anything here, but there's a fine line.
Ms. Stevenson, one thing I forgot to say, and I told, I'm sorry, but Chuck gave us some language to use and I've already created a, a form that actually says by signing this agreement during the COVID-19 crisis, we understand that, that any litigation resulting from a gathering in, in our, in this, under this agreement will be the sole responsibility of the organization that is leasing the facility and the school system is identified or whatever that, that term is. So, I've, I've got that. That would have to be signed. I, I forgot to tell you that. Sorry about that.
That's, that'll work in my opinion, but we got a motion, a second. Any other discussion? The only other thing I'd, I'd look at is, is agreements going forward as long as we got COVID. And it may be the point with flu and everything else, like if we're reading that, we might all look at a, a higher fee on our cost of what we're spending to disinfect and bathrooms and that. Because $15 an hour for janitorial and just $100, that's just, that, that may not even be covering utilities and...
Yeah, and, and Ms. Stevenson, when, when, when these questions come up, it makes you look at policy a little closer. There is a section in this policy that says the board ought to review the, the fee structure annually. So, we, that'll need to be done in a coming, you know, meeting. We'll, we'll bring some recommendations to you.
Before we could get to that in the next, for the next meeting as follow approaches. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Pose likewise. Motion carries. Next item, please, sir, is approval of annual board calendar 2021, 20, 2020, 2021. And it's, copy of it's in our packet. Dr. Heath, send me.
Uh, just, I mean, there's two things, the, the one is the special session on July 9th, which probably isn't on that. And then the other one is the summer retreat date, but I think they, those might be on here later on to discuss. They are, they're, they're down in the points of information. So, yeah, this is, these are the things that every year and each month of the year, we, we want to, to address.
Motion to approve. Calendar.
So moved.
Mr. Tucker.
So, so we're approving the special session on July 9th and the date for the work session will be?
No. Did we do?
That, that's, that, those are the revisions.
Okay, do it as, okay, I've got backwards because we'd stuck it in the points of information. I should have put it there. That's the revision to the July 9th.
To add July 9th and then set the date for the...
Work session.
The summer work session.
Which we usually do in August, don't we?
Well, the discussion I'd had earlier is, do we, I know we said we'd make that decision tonight, but do we want to wait a little bit even to the next one to set it to see what goes on? Or, or set it tonight and make, we were looking at backing up that, um...
Let me recommend, let me recommend something. On our July 9th special session, you know, the special session is for you to consider the plan that we bring to you for reopening. We'll also advertise, if this is, if this is good with you, we'll advertise at that meeting to decide a date for the summer retreat. And that, that gives us a few weeks here and that gives us a little time to see where we are.
So, we're just adding a special session?
Yes. You like posting twice in the... Our modification to the annual calendar led to July 9th special session, do I have a motion to accept it?
Go ahead.
Mr. Tucker.
Second.
Flip Cohen. Mr. Bradley, second. All in favor, please say aye. Pose likewise. Motion carries. Next item is consider approval reinstate tenure for Erin Cunningham. Dr. Heath?
Uh, yeah, tenure law states that when we have a teacher who had tenure previously and leaves us and then comes back, there's like a, a year or so, as long as the test scores come in properly, we can, we'll re-grant them tenure without having to wait for five years like the, the original time that they were granted tenure. Ms. Cunningham is being recommended for tenure.
You said, Mr. Posey makes motion to approve, Mr. Dunn, second. All in favor, please say aye. Pose likewise. Congratulations, Ms. Cunningham on tenure. We appreciate it. Next item is item nine, is discussion consider of attendance TSBA Fall District Meeting and TSBA Annual Convention and Leadership Conference in Nashville. I'd spoken with Dr. Heath and, back a couple of weeks ago in discussion of what is going on with our budget and the revenue streams and those type items and just me personally, but I need, it'd be a board decision. I just didn't felt like with the amount of dollars that we can get some value from it. But, does that value make it representative for what's happening here in our local district? For that money to be spent for us on that TSBA convention or the fall meeting? And, uh, that, that's the reason on there and I'm, I'm making a recommendation, recommendation that this year we pass on those items, but...
Uh, in our discussion, I, I informed Mr. Stevenson that after, after the legislature went back and revisited their budget and they cut that 2% salary increase, that was, Cole, what was it, 100, 100 and...
Two.
250 something, 254,000 dollars. It was like we had already completed our budget, right? But then they went in and grabbed that and it's gone now. So, you'll see a couple of items on here tonight addressing that. One of them, down in my points of information, I'll go ahead and just take, during that discussion, I let Mr. Stevenson know that I had made a decision that I was going to limit travel by staff. You know, we're always sending people to trainings, to meetings, states, sometimes a state will have a meeting that may not be required, but if you miss it, you know, you might miss something important. Well, we're gonna limit our travel to essential meetings now. And then make sure that, that, that the, you know, any way possible, we attend meetings virtual if they're offered just because of that budget, until we get a handle on what COVID-19 has actually done to our budget. I think that's, that's a, a move that, well, that is a move that I thought we better make. So, we have done that as one of the, one of the steps in addressing that budget shortfall, not shortfall, but that budget change. And then, and, and telling Mr. Stevenson that, then, then he's, he brought this up for discussion, so...
Do you think, Dr. Heath, that due to the COVID situation, that maybe they might allow us to do something else to, to receive those points that we have to have every year, that we could receive here locally?
You know, I'm, I'm not sure. I mean, I know they've already made some, the legislature stepped in and made some changes. I, I think they went on, they went ahead with summer law, didn't they? Did they?
She's talking about the seven hours that, that board members are required to do. And as long as we do that through the local option credit, through the, the winter retreat, which we do every year, as long as everybody's there, then everybody's covered. The only thing that we do is it, then you have to...
But, that is a change they made just recently, not because of COVID-19. That was a legislative pressure change that they made.
So, everyone can get those, those credits.
I agree. If we ask our employees not to, to, to expect any travel plans, I think we need to do the same as well.
Mr. Tucker, second. Ms. Haynes, I mean, Mr. Tucker made the most, Ms. Haynes, second. All in favor, please say aye. Pose likewise. I'm, I'm, I hate it, but I just don't think...
We just need to follow what we're asking of the others to do.
Yep. I appreciate it. Item 10 is consider approval of school level outstanding accounts payable items.
Uh, just remove that one. That, that was a placeholder I asked Ms. Puntman to put in there in case we had at some of the schools some items that maybe hadn't been invoiced yet to us here at the end of the fiscal year. Uh, I think everything is taken care of and we don't have to worry about that, so just remove item 10.
Item 11 is in line with the discussion on the budget issues, Dr. Heath?
Uh, yes, in looking at the classes offered at Lincoln County High School and some of the programs, there were several, several changes we were making in order to meet some budgetary concerns because of what happened at the budget at the state level. One of those is we, we have a few people that will be now working part of the day, if not all day, in our virtual school. They can, they may still be working from Lincoln County High School because they may be doing both the Lincoln County High School and the virtual. I, I gave Mr. Owens and their administrative team a little time to, to finish their scheduling before we actually sat down and see, you know, who's doing what and virtually in that aspect. So, and by doing that, we're able not to have to contract with the company that we were contracting with to be the teachers of record last year. Our plan was to, to use them for about three years and slowly get off of them and have our own people doing it anyway. COVID-19 just expedited that. So, so that's one thing. And that has nothing to do with item 11. I just wanted you to know that was one of the things we did. Item 11 is the abolishment of a position in CTE, in health sciences, where we found that based on what kids requested, there was average, for just an average class size, there were 12 classes to be taught. There were three, three full-time teachers which, which could teach 18 classes. So, really, and truly, 12 classes is more like two, it is two teachers. And so, we've abolished one position. And I think I sent you information on that sometime during the week to let you know this was coming. So, but I, I can't abolish a, a, a position that a tenure teacher is in. So, this is a tenure teacher. She will be placed, if she requests, on a recall list, which means if we have any position open in our district in which she is certified, she will be given option for that position.
I have a recommendation to have a motion.
Mike, recommend us?
Mr. Tucker makes motion. Drive a second.
Second.
Mr. Bradley, second. All in favor, please say aye. Pose likewise.
I appreciate that. That's one of the harder things that you, that as a director you'll ever have to do. You know, it's, it's a tenure position, but we've got to take care of our taxpayers as well as our, as our, as our employees. And when we have a position in which there are zero students, that, that, I mean, it's, it's, there's no option. So, thank you, guys.
Item 12 is consider approval of contract with RevTrack for credit card and online payment collection.
I'm gonna ask Brad to speak to that for us.
Is he making these names up tonight? IXL and RevTrack?
IXL, RevTrack, you know, just whatever you wanna call it, so. In the past, we have used NutriKids in MySchoolBooks with cafeteria software. And with the MySchoolBooks, we have had the ability to take credit card payments online for our school cafeteria. So, we've been doing that, I don't know, four or five years now. That's worked really well. We've had really good participation with that. With our transition to Skyward this year, we are going to change over to Skyward for our food service as well. And to do that, we have to pick a payment processing vendor for credit cards. credit cards. Um, so, uh, we went through the evaluations with that. Spring Greenlee actually, um, went through that process and talked with several of the other processors that are out there. Um, and Skyward said that unofficially, that this was one of their most popular, uh, credit card processing, uh, people out there, uh, that use Skyward. Uh, they've had really good success with them. It integrates very well with Skyward. Uh, it will also give us the added ability for the schools to now be able to take credit card payments. So with, then Skyward, we could say, all right, we're having a T-shirt sale. We've got a field trip fee that's due. They'll be able to put these fees into Skyward and the parent will be able to come onsite and pay by credit card. There will be, there will be a fee we pass along. Uh, if, uh, unfortunately, we just don't, we have not had a way to build in the cost of what credit card processing would cost. Every time you go to Walmart and swap a credit card, that cost of that credit card swipe is built into the products. But right now, we will be passing that fee on, um, to the parents when they swipe and it'll be, I think it's 3.61%, is what it comes, comes out to. So.
What does that fee in, I mean, were we, was there a fee in NutriKids?
There was. The parents paid. I think they paid, if you put $10 in, you paid 3.50. If you put $200 in, you paid $3.50. So it was a.
I didn't know if the fee is comparable or less.
It's actually gonna be cheaper for the parents by far. Uh, so if you've got $100, if you put $100 in an account with NutriKids, I think it was 3.50 plus a certain amount. And it was a hard fee. You paid that 3.50 whether you put $10 in or $100. So, um, ultimately, I think it will be cheaper on our parents and it will give us that ability at the school. I don't know how quickly we'll get all that implemented. I think we've discussed internally. The administrative team has said, I think the parents would like to use it. Uh, and we can even put, I think, a card swipe at the school. They'll be able to swipe a credit card at the school. So, um, that's what this is. So I'll answer any questions you have on that.
You don't think it'd be a problem getting that implemented into a short period of time?
We're, poor Tracy who's having to implement Skyward anyway, I'll probably take on the back, backend process of this to work with them. I, I think it's a matter of just getting our banking information uploaded. Um, where Tracy's already in so much of an integration process, it's just one more step she's gonna add into that. So I, I don't know that we will just go gung ho right as soon as school starts, but if it's up and running and, and working well, we may be able to open school with it. But it, it really just depends how far we are into the, uh, process. I think for the school nutrition piece, we need, we need this probably right away because those parents have really have become accustomed to being able to put money, uh, in their accounts. So.
Gives her way to stagger it in for school.
It's really up to us how we, no, not really. We really have to probably, if we're gonna set up the school nutrition piece to go ahead and do that, I think we've gotta do that just on that one piece. It's school nutrition. Um, and then we could set up the school accounts if we wanted to later because they will have separate bank accounts from what the school nutrition does. So.
Any other discussion?
No, this should be pretty. You don't think it's all that hard to do?
Have a motion. Move to approve. Pose move to approve.
Second.
Tucker, second. All in favor, please say aye. Pose likewise. Motion carries. We appreciate it.
Thank y'all very much.
Mr. Bradford?
Thank you. First item we have are the financial reports. We'll give you a quick update. Dr. Heath mentioned that we did, uh, from the origin, from the budget that was approved by the commission to the final BEP estimate. There was a loss of revenue of about 250,000. On a good note, our, and I think I talked to Dr. Heath about this, but your March sales tax collections were up five and a half percent compared to March last year. And we were kind of expecting April to be down, but our April collections were actually up 11% compared, compared to April last year. So that's good news. Again, that's not gonna offset what we're, uh, losing on the state side, but, uh, we'll just continue to monitor it monthly and, uh, keep you, y'all updated. So. Any question on the financials? We look in pretty good shape overall in terms of budget to actuals. So, but I'd be glad to answer any questions.
So I have a motion to accept.
Make a motion to accept.
Mr. Bradley made most a sec. Ms. Haynes, second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise.
Item 2A through 2C. I do think it'd be fine to take these as a whole. There's no new money. Uh, the first amendment's a small cleanup amendment. Um, wouldn't have to do it, but since we do, we're fortunate to have a board meeting right here. It's just within a major category in the 141 fund. I've got a small cleanup amendment for the cafeteria fund, no new money there. And the last one is just the, on the, the high school building program and Blanche building program. We lumped the entire project cost in building construction, but we actually pay bills. We try to pay them out of the appropriate line item. So this just, um, we initially lumped it into the one building construction line. This just allocates the money. So again, uh, I think it, I would be glad to answer any questions, but I do think it's appropriate to take those as a group. That's what y'all wanna do.
So all those items on the capital outlay are regular point dollars that we were normally in nothing that we had to do a change order with architectural services?
That's correct. And it's, that you mentioned that previous to, I guess, this building program, capital projects where their bond proceeds have gone into a fund, you didn't have to amend those budgets. You just spin out of it. But this is a recent change. The state audit requested that we appropriate those funds. So this is no, so this is no change order, no new money. It's just really, uh, it's really not necessary, but it just, it's an opportunity we can clean our books up a little bit. So.
Uh, motion. Ms. King makes motion to accept. I have a second. Mr. Dunn, second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise. Motion carries.
Next item. So that was a, to be clear, that was a June 30, current fiscal year budget amendments, those three. This next one is actually a, a amendment for the new fiscal year, July. So I do wanna make that distinction. First amendment here, again, there's no new money in this amendment, but it's budget amendment to appropriate additional money needed for textbooks for that coming school year. And then there's corresponding reductions that Dr. Heath has identified to pay for those additional textbook dollars. The second amendment, the board has previously, maybe at the last meeting or the previous meeting approved the, the public relations position. And Dr. Heath has made, um, cuts to cover the cost of that. So again, there's no new money involved in that amendment. And the last amendment is a reappropriation of some CTE dollars, uh, that we're not gonna be able to obligate by year end. So we're just wanting to roll that money over. So.
Have a motion.
I'll move.
Mr. Tucker makes motion.
Second.
Mr. Bradley, second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise. Motion carries.
Next item, bid results for the double stack oven at Flintville. We did have a good turnout. A lot of times it's hard to get bids, but we had, um, five bids and, um, our recommendation is the low bid. I don't think, I don't know that y'all seen this email, but there, Spring did get an email clarification that this is an all-inclusive price. There was some standard language in that loan bid with what they submitted that stated, we will do the install, but if we run into anything above and beyond, we might bill you. But we do have in writing, Spring emailed them and they said, well, I'm sorry, that was our standard language. I forgot to delete it, but this is an all-inclusive price. So, uh, Spring and I recommend awarding it to a low bid at $27,011.51.
Make a motion to accept.
Mr. Bradley makes motion, uh, or is it Mr. Dunn? I don't know.
Ah, second motion.
Mr. Dunn, second. And this will be coming, I think I asked earlier from somebody, it's coming out of the line item of equipment in?
Should be this year's.
This year's money.
Yes, sir.
And if there's a grant allocation, then it would show up in.
Correct. I did ask, I don't think, I think this will be this year's money. I think she told me that we did not get the grant or maybe a grant wasn't available. So I think.
So we did not get the grant.
Correct. So this will be out of budgeted funds.
Any other discussion? Roll comment, please, man.
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Haynes?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Stevenson?
Aye.
Mr. Tucker?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Dunn?
Aye.
Just a quick comment on that. I do believe she applied for, she's applying for every grant for every piece of equipment. So just must not have gotten this one.
I think so, yes.
I don't recall.
Oh, yeah. I mean, there was a grant associated with it. And I thought we were might gonna get half of it, but that's what I asked the question.
But I asked her on the day of the bid opening and she said we didn't get it.
So there, there will be no offset then?
Next item we have, item five. Uh, we noted here that Renee to present, but, you know, I think we've kinda talked about the CARES Act, the preliminary budget's in there. So, uh, we're asking that y'all approve the preliminary budget. And I guess if there are any specific questions, either Renee or Dr. Heath or someone can answer those.
I'll, I'll say that, uh, of course, Ms. Pryor, uh, this, this was a, one of those jobs. I don't think she asked me to assign it to her, but she took it and ran with it. And the team has been meeting, uh, more than I could, I could describe to you and then, and working so hard on this thing. Uh, you know, all of our, all of our folks have been. So, and it was one with a very, very quick turnaround. And, uh, I think it was a lot of stress involved in trying to figure out what the needs were because you guys know how this thing changes daily with this COVID-19 and how to use those dollars to best impact, what we're gonna be doing this, this coming school year and making sure we address the needs of, of all our kids. Uh, so, you know, if there, if there are any questions, either Renee or I or somebody can, can answer that.
Y'all ought to be a base, Ms. Pryor, something hard.
How much, what was the total? Six?
$642,000.
642.
And about, like, half of that's been spent on technology, the lower grades. We had Brad's help with that. I was just saying for K2, um, because, you know, technology, there was just very little for them to use that school, or one-to-ones, we do that again. That was a big purchase right there. I will be able to.
Drive a motion to accept.
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise. We appreciate it.
Last item, we did try to get this information out to y'all a little sooner. Uh, there was a small increase in the state employee health insurance, 2%. Take a, it'll take effect January 1. We did try to simplify it so to hopefully give y'all some good information just so you, you can see the, the, the yellow columns there. Uh, the column to the left of the yellow column is currently what employees pay per month. Uh, and then the yellow column would be, um, what that additional cost per month would be. So I don't think we have to vote on this tonight if y'all wanna wait till next month. And, and this is a starting point. I, and, and, you know, we can go from there, uh, if y'all wanna make any adjustments. I will note, cause it jumped out at me again, looking odd. If you look at support staff, if you look at the standard under support staff, that premium amount they pay is significantly lower. But if some of y'all recall, back years ago, when the Affordable Care Act came out, a lot of these insurance companies were out trying to sell gap insurance.
Yep.
With a limited plan. So a lot of people did that, but the state came in and said, hey, uh, districts, you know, you promised when you signed this memorandum of understanding that you would have no other insurance. And hey, you, you got this gap policy coupled with our limited. So they basically, we did luckily didn't buy on that, but it forced all those companies or systems to get off the gap insurance. But what it also did is drove a spike in the limited plan. So the state had a dramatic increase on the limited plan. Standard went down. So if you see something on that standard plan that looks a little funny, that's the reason behind, behind that. But that's for your information. Um, I did look roughly, you know, on the annual cost, I think for the school system to absorb that increase, you're looking at probably, you know, I'd say in the 70, 80, 80,000 range per year. Uh, but that should be. If you have any questions before next month, uh, but we probably do need to make it a voting item next month.
How many is total? I'd ask Mr. Karen and just make sure, how many total employees have we got, system-wide?
Somewhere around 700, three, about, yeah. So we got 335 taking insurance. That's support and correct?
Yes, sir. That, we did put a, we put some information to kinda give you a breakdown. Now, I, I don't know that 700 number. Does that include subs? I, I don't know. It doesn't. Okay.
So I mean, and, and I, this rationale has come up before in past board meetings. You know, you got 2% that these do versus the ones that don't, then what do you look at on, if you're paying, absorbing that? Is that taken away from somebody that doesn't have it? And that's where the debate becomes and when you start trying to do with insurance, what's fair and equitable? And, uh, I, I mean, I'm just saying, I'm not taking a position one way or the other, but I had to look at it. There's 335 taking it, but we've got 700 and 735 total employees. And so only half are taking the, taking the insurance. And I guess that goes back to whenever we look at this further down the road in our scale, after we can get past COVID-19 and our salary structure is looking at some other systems. When you go to HR department, are they paying a higher amount of their insurance and paying a little higher? So, you know, those are some things we have to. And is that, I mean, we've looked at it from a standpoint on school buses. Is it a draw if you offer insurance? What, is it more of a draw if our insurance is better priced that, that they don't have to pay for too? So those are some of the things that I'm just throwing out that think of when we get to that point and looking at it. But if it's all, everybody can look over there, if it's all right, let's wait till the next meeting to make a vote on it.
I, I would agree with that. I think we need to.
Fortunately, you know, you're always a little anxious when you plug the numbers. Fortunately though, when you plug the numbers, and I'm not making light of $7 a month, but, you know, kinda worst case, which you have is a premier single-only plan, you know, it would, it's just gonna cost an additional $7 a month, you know? You know, when you, when you start to plug those, your, your initial reaction, you hope it's not something that you know is gonna have a dramatic effect. And in the same case, on a family plan, it'd be an additional $18 per month with what's before you. But again, we can look at it and, you know, those, uh, those county contributions can be adjusted. That's just something for y'all to look at. I do believe, um, Ms. Renee didn't mention it, but we fortunately do have a special call commission meeting on the 30th just to take care of anything that might come up. And, uh, we will be presenting that cooperative purchasing agreement to the commission. So that worked out well, that hopefully that won't be a, a holdup. So, uh, we'll, we'll plan to take that to them. I think Mr. Renee's gonna shoot me an email kinda doing a brief description about what it is and we'll, we'll take care of that Tuesday.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Points of information discussion. Dr. Heath?
Well, the first one is attendance of TSBA Fall District Meeting. So I don't know if what you voted earlier impacts the district meeting or not. I'm sure it does. Uh, so, um, we're.
We're out.
Yeah. I mean, there's no, there's no requirement. So I, we mark number one off, I guess. Uh, number two, set the date for the summer retreat. We decided to do that at our next meeting. So mark number two off. Review employment, employee health insurance packages. Cole did that for us. That's three. Exit surveys, uh, we really didn't have a normal exit year this year. We exited March 13th and we didn't have the surveys out yet. So mark number four off. Whole child update, uh, Carmen Smith will be giving that next month. Uh, she, uh, in discuss, in talking with her, for the whole child update, I mean, she has like a three-hour presentation she can give. We have, we have so much going on for the whole child in Lincoln County schools. So board meeting and talk about the suicide prevention update, you know, that we, last year, that was a big topic for us and something we had to address with our kids. If you'd like a smaller update, I'll put that on the August meeting. And then the whole child, more everything, I'll put that on the, uh, summer retreat if that's okay. Uh, but, but she was not, she's not here tonight. So, uh, number six, we already talked, already talked about the travel restrictions. Number seven was special sessions, special session, we, July 9th at 5:30, did we say? 5:30? What?
5:30 in the auditorium, that was.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Stevenson, you put something on there about COVID-19 and recognition?
Yes. I, I thought with, until we get something a little more favorable of the conditions out there that we suspend our recognition for retired teachers and our recognition even on staff and support staff with the family that comes with them. And we may take a little more time and roll them in to do more in one meeting, but I thought it might be best to limit that exposure if that works for everybody. Is everybody in all right with that to suspend it a while?
Think it's appropriate, yeah.
Upon adjournment, after we get a motion to adjourn, the board will tour the new STEM and the renovations that are going here at Lincoln County High School. And Sahil and Andrew, again, appreciate it. I know it's, sometimes it's been a little long nights and what it is and the function of, but we appreciate you serving this year. And I know this year is not what you had in mind or envisioned. And, uh, but, you know, everybody's learning. As one of somebody says, ain't nothing I can't learn you the next day. And I think everybody's learning something about you every day, whether it be good, bad, or indifferent. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Can I say something real quick? Uh, in our, in our leadership team planning and our, and our principals and administrators, you know, we, we've had a lot of long meetings, a lot of long discussions. And, and sometimes we get a little frustrated with each other because we go down one path and we, you know, every time we answer one question. every time we answer one question, there's three more that pop up as a result of that answer. So I, you know, I just want to say thanks to all the supervisors and the administrators for the work that we've done so far on this. And then I also want to make the board aware that, you know, as we begin to roll out plans, it's, you know, our teachers haven't really had to worry too much yet because we've been out. They're going to start thinking, how's this impacting me and, and my world? And so it's going to be a very stressful, you know, before COVID-19 hit, we already knew we were going to have a new student management system. That's hard, that's a big thing anyway. But now with virtual and the potential that everybody's going to have to do some virtual teaching at some point, at least everybody's going to learn, have to learn how to do it. Because if, you know, the state board has put out some regulations and rules about what constitutes virtual attendance, and it's not what we did in the spring, okay? It's not. And, and we, and we knew that wasn't going to be the case because we were in survival mode for a little bit of the spring before we got our feet under us. But I want to say this, and just the groups of teachers I've had the opportunity to talk to, whether it was that group today or different groups at different times, just, you know, when they're here or around and I can talk to them. And on our virtual faculty meetings last week, we've got some phenomenal staff members, phenomenal teachers and, and staff members, support staff in our schools. You know, we've, it's, the last time we didn't have the best test scores in South Central was 2015. Okay? And that's, that's a result of the work those folks do every day. And I know that that's still going to be the case when this thing is over. And it, and the work that they have put in to, to give us the best test scores in South Central those years, that same diligent work, that same compassion for the kids and for what they're doing, that's going to be there in getting us through this. Because, you know, we, we wrote down a list of things the other day that our teachers are going to have to be trained on, or for the most part, have to learn over the next few months. And it's a list that's going to be tough. And, and I'm, I'm, when I talk to them, I, I try not to sugarcoat it at all, you know, this is going to be a tough time, but if we do it the right way and we make it a few months from now, we would be so much better off, our teachers would be better off, because they're going to learn what virtual teaching is and virtual learning is and what, what,